All right, so by eight o'clock it should be done. That's awesome. I mean, the forty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-seven was in the house? Yeah, it's perfect. He's heard all the information. Is that it? That's it. We should all do that. We should all have a dinner. Maybe just for the oldest. I called up my old goals. I don't know why I don't do this every year. I call up my old goals and see what hasn't been done. That is a good one. That there will be one. That goes through the same. That goes through the same. It's like a weather quarter.
And it was the one that I didn't get.
I've done that before, but I don't. Called the board of the board selectmen on Monday, July twenty-first, two thousand fourteen. Madam Clerk, would you please listen up?
Pleasure. A pleasure. The President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, gentlemen, basically just two things. At seven o'clock, Fire Chief Staffing Vacancies Review for the Deputy Fire Chief. And shortly thereafter, we'll go through our two thousand fifteen burns that we put off for about a month, but should be all set to go. And that's it for the night. Any more or anything?
No, nothing else in the, uh, um, in the, uh, packet for today.
Well, obviously, we have a vacancy coming up with the Deputy Fire Chief. Congratulations to Steele for becoming, well, we'll be the chief in Groton, but obviously it leaves a vacancy. And Chief, if you want to go through your procedure and...
Sure. As you know, Steele will be leaving to Groton on, uh, his, actually, his last day in Littleton will be August seventeenth. He has given his notice for, for that date. So with that creates the vacancy for the Deputy Chief. It would be my wish is to fill that vacancy as it's an integral part of the functions of the department, having the second-in-command assisting with the day-to-day operations as well as responding to calls. He is one of the key individuals that responds in the off-hours along with myself. That allows four people on, on scene for any major accident or fire while we're waiting for the call department to come, which is typically three, four, five minutes behind. So additionally, that, you know, the position is responsible for coordinating for hiring full-time firefighters, filling the, uh, the overtime, overseeing training, a whole variety of things in conjunction with myself. It is a grade twelve position. There was a, the job description was created about a, about a year and a half ago now. And when, when the position was created, it's my wish to hire from within. There are about four individuals from within that would potentially qualify for the position. And it would be, means nothing more than to bring them up from within the department. Over the years, everybody works, improves, you know, their education, their certifications, and, you know, that's the best way to, to promote and just bring them up within, move them through the ranks, and hire from the call department if that's, if that's a feasible option. The process for filling the position would be to host an interview for two weeks. From after that point, evaluate. The, uh, the applications would send out an essay packet after that, probably about a week's worth of time. We'll get the essays back, review them, have a committee, a committee that would consist of an outside chief, captain on the call department, a, in a member of, another department head from town, as well as an independent, uh, uh, sorry, as well as a police officer. They'd be one of the sergeants. And that would be on the initial interview panel. And they would also review their essays. Depending on how the essays come back, odds are we would actually send out a second, a little more in-depth essay to go along with that for their, their interview. Then after the first interview process, there will be a second interview, which would be with myself and another outside chief, evaluate at that point. And depending on how many applicants put in and make a selection, and then bring the final choice up to you guys.
You're a strong chief, right? So, I mean, essentially you are the hiring authority in town, so.
Correct.
You're being nice and kind to bring it forward, but we appreciate that. At least I appreciate that.
I think that's a very valid and important point. At this point, are you all set? Because I want to open up to the entire board. They want to talk about the procedure or the, or the process.
Yep.
Yeah, you should watch him.
Watch him.
So if anyone wants to start, I'll go last. Anyway.
I'll go.
Good.
Yeah. During the Fire Chief interviews, we had like a, um, not an assessment center, um, paid-for assignment, but a, you know, a scenario where the applicants had to come forward. Are you thinking of doing something like that?
Absolutely. It'd be very similar, very similar to the chief's process. They would be, already have a pretty good idea of what we're going to have on the essays. Obviously, it has to do with our department and, uh, in the future. And in the interview process, there will be scenarios, absolutely, so that we can dig, dig deep and, and put them to the test.
I found that very interesting, too, in going through that process. That was good to me.
Yeah, it makes sense to me. I mean, I'm a big fan of hiring internally. If you have candidates that would meet the position, if not, then, you know, got to go outside, so I'm good.
To speak highly of the department, I'd have to say that you feel you have four qualified candidates to be deputy chief. So that's, uh, certainly reflects well on you, reflects well on your predecessors, reflects well on Steele also, you know, as deputy chief. How you've brought folks along, trained them, and they're ready to, you have that many folks internally in such a small department ready to take that big step forward. It's great for the town. Love it. So.
Absolutely.
And as Jim mentioned, you know, you're bringing it before the Board of Selectmen as a courtesy for us all. Very much appreciated. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
This is great.
Yes. So I like the idea of an assessment center. The one thing that we've done, we have done, and it was done with the Fire Chief's process, another process in the past, is a citizen-at-large. Was your, your plan to have one or not have one?
Uh, was to have one.
Okay.
The, the department head is also a citizen, and one of the outside chiefs is also a citizen.
Okay. You talked about the job description, and it's been in force for about a year and a half. Did you find, or is it necessary to do any tweaks to it, or is it solid, the way it is?
Um, it is solid. And as it, as the, I believe you guys have a copy of the job description, it outlines the recommendations between the education, as well as multiple certifications, and time in service. And with that, there, like I said, there are four candidates that would be eligible for, for that position that have also voiced an interest.
And I guess my final point is, you know, and I'm very comfortable with all of this, is that, you know, I for one, and I guess I'm sort of speaking to the board, too, this is our chance to talk to the chief. But I think once he starts the process, it, we, we need to make sure that we stay back. And we need to have confidence in you that you're going to go by the process and pick the right person. And, and we're done hearing from you until you bring somebody here to say, this is the new deputy chief.
I appreciate that.
Chief, a couple of things. You mentioned yourself a, a captain of the, of the on-call department, and a Fire Chief from a different town, a citizen-at-large, someone from the police, aside from the police department?
Correct.
Would that be the entire makeup of the?
Including myself.
Including yourself. Right. Now, obviously, the people you feel are the most qualified in this forum. When you go to do your essay questions and write them up, who do you bounce your ideas off since you can't bounce them off those four candidates?
Uh, other chiefs.
Other chiefs?
I mean, and the deputy and Steele. We've been having some excellent discussions about, uh, the town and the way the town's growing. And that's what's driving our essays, without being too specific right now.
And is the captain on the on-call, is that the highest officer in the, in the call department?
Uh, there is a deputy chief as well, but he may have an interest.
Oh, I guess that makes sense. I should have thought of that. Well, I'm satisfied with everything that's going on so far. Any other points by the board?
It's one clarification I make.
Sure.
And it's going to be your prerogative. That, this panel or committee, you'll be the sole decider, is that right? Or is it going to be?
I am the final appointing authority, but obviously, I mean, I...
You'll have the inputs, but I mean, it's not going to be a committee decision. It's your decision.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thanks, Jim.
Anything else? Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much.
We're going to make a motion, right?
Sure.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the Fire Chief's request under the Staffing Vacancies Review policy to fill one full-time benefited Deputy Fire Chief position.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Congratulations, chief. Good luck during the process.
Thank you.
How long the procedure? Should I ask you that before?
Um, roughly hoping to have it done by the end of September.
Oh, that's, that's fascinating.
So, give or take. Depends on how the first week of September falls and how busy things get and, uh, and vacations in August. And I think there's, I'll be away for a week in August, but should, I, I hope to have it done ultimately by the end of September.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With the board's pleasure, we're going to go into goal-setting. Any special procedure you want to use? You want to use the matrix that's drawn up by our town administrator and add a Mr. Cars?
We will add it, Mr. Cars, in about one minute. So we'll put them up on the screen.
Anyway, you wanted to discuss on how we, I can't remember how we did it last year. I think we just, I think we took the chart after you made.
Yeah, what I did was, just in, in terms of the, the matrix that you've got on in front of you, and I'll just put it up here for a minute, that I started with the goals that the board adopted last year. And then just as a reference, so for example, economic development as a category. It, on the left, it, it lists specific goals that you adopted and then a status of where we stood with that. The, the next column is labeled potential goals for FY twenty fifteen. And then there are a number of, uh, and, and then there, the particular suggestions from each of the board members are in the five columns to the right of that. So, so what the focus was, was the FY twenty fifteen potential goals column, where if you could pull in specific recommendations made by individual members and then pull that into, and then just go down the list. It works. I hope we did it last year, I do, I think.
Okay. So let's start with economic development?
Jim, can I ask just a couple of level-setting questions to make sure I'm on the same page? It's my first time going through this. So just a couple of questions. So, um, goals versus actions, that's something I need to wrap my head around. And maybe it's not exactly applicable in this conversation, but that's why I want to make sure I'm on the same page. So when I think of goals, I think of kind of overarching umbrella things, like I want to improve my health. And then the actions are, I'm going to start to exercise, I'm going to get a nutritionist, you know, that kind of thing. So my mind kind of went more in the, a general sense. And then how do we figure out what the plan is to achieve that goal? But I don't know if that's actually the right way to think about this. Are, you know, kind of specific actions considered goals in this context? And maybe just help me understand, what's a goal?
I think in the past, you have the main goal. At the same time, I think this board, when speaking about goals, has also said, you know, we actually bounce ideas at this meeting that we're having right now. You might have a certain goal, and then Alex might want to add on to it an action plan that might be, help that goal out. So during this...
Subbullets to the overarching thing, something like that, like the one A, one B, one C, that kind of thing. Okay.
And much of the action is going to, you know, we aren't actually the ones that are doing a lot of the action part.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're setting the tone, and others will, are actually the ones that have responsibility for getting there.
Okay, so it's a good mix of both. All right.
But, but there will be certain topics that this board will probably want to take a lead on or take entirely.
Yeah.
And in the past, just like Mr. McCurdy has said, we've been able to use the talents of other people in, in, on different committees to help out. I know one of my goals later on, I'm going to speak about a committee, but that, I would rely on other people to, to accomplish one of the goals I hope to initiate.
Did you say a committee to study committees?
If I did, I don't know.
Just kidding.
That's our next meeting. We better have a feasibility committee.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, so we're wide open on the economic development part.
If I may. Melissa's approach, I think, is good, is that that goal is very overarching. Sometimes we tend to, you know, set lots of goals, and the goals are really more, I want to do something, and it's an activity. My personal approach at, you know, through a professional career has been, there are goals, objectives to get us toward the goal, the milestones to measure the objectives. It's my feeling that short of that, you really don't know if you're achieving the objective. And if you're not achieving the objective, how do you know you're progressing toward the goal? Melissa's health example is, I think, a very good one. You know, I want to improve my health. Okay, you're going to get a nutritionist by a certain date, and that milestone becomes, I'll hire a nutritionist by a certain date. I'm going to have a workout program, and I'm going to do Mondays, Fridays, as an example. For the next six weeks, I'm going to be doing this sort of weight training or this sort of aerobic training. And again, those dates, and now you're ticking it off that it's being accomplished. And now that objective is being taken care of toward the goal. And indeed, at some point, you can measure the improved health on that it's taking place. And I ask that we consider it that way. And then that ends up reducing the number of goals also, because when we really think about it, we're not going to try to solve world peace here tonight, but oftentimes, we get into ruts that way. And then we just come up with one after another of an item. So I'd ask that we at least think of that. Perhaps before we actually get into the goals, decide on a methodology, and then, you know, approach that methodology with the goals we want and how we fit into them.
For what type of, I guess, one of the things I would think, some of the milestones you talk about and mentioned might be something that we take up two months from now when part of that topic comes up. I mean, do we want to set down all these, besides goals, do you want to set up more than that?
They're malleable. So as time goes by and new information comes forward, we adjust as necessary. So it's not a case that the goal even is set in concrete today. It's with the information we have at hand, it's the best we can do at the point. But as, as time goes by, and another objective will serve that goal, and we're able to resource, because that becomes important also, are we able to resource it? Otherwise, they're just pipe dreams if we have no resourcing plan for it also. That's an important piece. And then it's just a wish list, and we have a wish list, nothing wrong with that. And we have that aside, realizing we'd like to be able to do that, but we know we're not going to get that this year or this decade because we just don't have the resources. So that has to be in consideration, too, as we come up with goals.
I think that's something that, you know, even though we don't necessarily have a formal, it isn't laid out, there isn't a chart laid out for how we go through it. I think that's something we pretty much do. We take the first pass at, gee, it would be nice. Here's our goal. And then, then somebody's going to say to us, well, an honor to get there, we have to do this, this, and this. That establishes the timeline and resources that you're talking about. And I think it's kind of a natural progression that we've been going through, built off this first, okay, this is, this is the general idea of what we want to do. And then the how we get there, or if we can get there, comes as we take these discussions further along.
Don't disagree. But I think we probably have enough knowledge and information to at least establish some of them, even this evening. And then, as I say, as new information comes forward, or other inputs, just call it other inputs come forward, we refine.
I, I think probably in some cases, we want to put a timeline on. We want to say we'd like to have this done by a certain amount of time. But some of it's going to be what staff can do, and, and what's a, what a realistic projection for what they're capable of. I mean, it's always good for us to say, we got to do this, 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 and this. And then we start handing out the papers for people to do stuff in it.
Realistic and achievable, otherwise useless.
Yeah.
So.
So, you know, for instance, the voter participation committee had a whole list of things that we had to done, had to do. And I think we got done, um, three-quarters or maybe more of them in the process. But, you know, some of these things are handed off that way.
And there's nothing wrong in actually failing to reach an objective also, or even to reach a goal. If it's a noteworthy goal and you think we can get there, and then as, you know, time goes by, we discover we can't for whatever reason, there's nothing wrong with that. Then again, we adjust as required at that point. So your, your point about you didn't get to them all, that's not the worst thing in the world.
I think we're agreeing. Mr. Burrow?
Yeah, usually what we've done in the, the goal-setting process is at this level, it, well, for the selectmen, it's a two-step process. One is a preliminary exercise tonight, which is then the subject of a public hearing, which you've scheduled for August eleventh. So that before you finalize the list, it's, that there's a chance to hear, hear some feedback from the community. Then what we've typically done is that I, the staff and I brought back implementation plans or measures for, I mean, I remember last year, within, within a couple of weeks, because we had so many goals that were in areas like economic development or housing or whatever, that we actually brought back, I think there were four committees that we decided we need to set up to, to be able to deal with some of the goals. So we set up Economic Development Committee, set up the Housing Committee, established Sustainability Committee, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. But that, but I think one of the keys is during the course of the year to, to get, to, to schedule updates on how the original set of goals are going, see what measures there are. This particular format here, I updated quarterly. This is, in fact, I've even updated it for, for the fiscal twenty fourteen goals through, you know, through this month, if there, if there has been further action on it. So I, my suggestion would be, for tonight anyway, at a broad policy level, see where, see what the areas of agreement are among the five members, test that at a public hearing, and then, and then task that we have of, you know, implementation steps. Because frankly, it involved a lot of players. I remember meeting last August with the planning board to go over their long list of goals that, that, that had been adopted here, which really required them to take some action on. That's how we got started with the master plan update, for example. Met with several other committees where even, even to see how, who would carry them out, in some cases, it's staff, in other cases, it's other committees that, that would, would be...
Or elected boards.
Yeah, right, other boards, yeah. So. So if we're talking about what Paul was talking about, you know, the, the term milestone, it's entirely possible to say that we're going to have some milestones that appear on and before the night of the public hearing over the goals. Because we're going to put them here and, and, you know, going by what you said, Keith, we're actually going to have more information. And some of those, we can identify that. Because I, I agree, establishing milestones and...
I think it, I think it would be possible, I, I think it would be possible for us to bring back, even in, certainly in time for your public hearing on August eleventh, implement, if, if, say you adopt ten goals tonight, as opposed to sixty, then we could bring back...
That was only half.
We could bring back the implementation, you know, some proposed implementation strategies in time for your, your meeting, you know, between now and August eleventh. We'd be working on it a lot. It'll be a top focus. But to bring that back as a, as a jumping off point for, uh, how to, how we implement the goals that you're, that you were doing.
Yeah, I think, Paul, you know, your, your idea, and Melissa's idea of the milestones and, you know, the direction in which the board wants to move. I've seen it work, as Keith described, you know, we give the overarching type goal setting. It goes out to the department heads. And as it comes back, we even say, okay, then, let's, 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 as Joe said, let's, this board take hold of this. There are some other things that some of the department heads are going to... There are some other things that some of the department heads are going to do. And we, you know, all we'll say is report back in six months and let's see, so.
But that itself is a milestone.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So I think that in, in previous years, it's been built that way. Has it been as tight as you described? Probably not. But it has worked. I think one, one issue that I, I've seen with the goals since I've been here is, boy, there's a lot. You know, and sometimes we lose focus because folks get overwhelmed. So in previous, I think a couple of years ago, we started a long-term goals. And, and just to rekindle some of those long-term goals is always a good thing. You know, one, one, one that I like and we've carried over is reviewing town bylaws. And we haven't, we didn't do it in that, that previous year, but that's something, you know, we should pick one and just say, okay, let's concentrate on this bylaw. And there's a lot of them and eventually you get through them. So I don't, I don't see it as defined as you, you, you see it. I think it's, it's a simulation thereof.
See, because there are a lot of people involved and just by way of example, this, this was the quarterly update from last November. And, and among the things, in addition to getting an update on where we stood with various goals, it simply tracked, well, who, who had we referred the, the goal to and it was a lot of people. It was these four new committees that we established, various departments as well. But it's just, it's a lot of, there's very few things that we do all alone in, in our office or whatever. It's, it's dealing with many, many other players because there's so many of the things that we try to achieve are, are linked across departments and different boards.
To be clear, all the folks are doing heavy lifting. Let's have no illusions at this table. I certainly have no illusions.
You said, you said, yeah, the board, this board sets the direction and then it's carried out by the, the whole organization.
I think when you take.
It's that coordinating that.
When you take a look at that chart too, it allows us, when you have that chart to say, as a board, you know something, we should bring this back to us and we should be running with this more than just handing it off to different committees. I think that's when we did that last time, there were a couple of times that we actually took the lead that was.
Well, I like the matrix because first off, it does identify and then other folks look at it and said, you missed this organization or this department. And they contribute to that particular goal also. So it's a very good visual aid to both ID who is, should be responsible and then who may have been missed.
And the Bexton's point, if we don't get focused on our goals, that's totally overwhelming. You can see just how overwhelming it is just by the visual representation of what's going on there.
A lot of stuff.
Yeah, one of the, a lot of goals, yeah.
We're going to spend, I'd like to talk about how to do it.
That we have to deal with is some of these goals we create actually end up being the, the statutory authority of another board or body. And so that puts us more in a support role and really we have to sort of make the suggestion to them and see if they take it up and, and bring it out. So some of that, some of the bench, I call it benchmarking, you call it milestone. But some of that is, is actually going to be created by the people we ask if they would consider whatever it is, whatever it might be.
I still think for tonight, what we should do is take the main topics that, that actually Keith has put down and we've injected our own thoughts on it. And starting with economic development and see where we go from there.
Mark and Lou.
Start with the plan.
Well, we all have different, different ideas that we've mentioned under economic development that come under this part of the matrix. But if anyone wants to lead by talking about one of theirs, that's fine.
I can start since mine just happens to filter to the top. So basically, for me, my thought was, you know, I definitely want to see a focus on improving the Littleton Common area. And there's lots of different ways to do that. And I think, you know, one A, one D, you know, lots of these actually support that overall goal. I'm supportive of a lot of them here. Including the, you know, sewer feasibility committee and supporting the progression of their work, et cetera. So I'm a big proponent of this whole category almost.
Keith, can I write on this?
Yes, that's, that is now yours.
It's getting past my point of mind.
So I'd support the, you know, the, the bullets that make it up and I'd call it, for me, just wanting to improve the common area in general. And that's how you go about doing it.
Now, you did mention the, the Common Sewer Study. As part of my objectives for the year two was to re-energize, if possible, that committee did an awful lot of work. And they didn't come to a finale, actually, and we have to obviously put someone on that, on that board. But I know we're jumping around a bit, but that's one of the goals I had is to let them finish up their work and see where we go from that. See whether it's feasible or not. I don't know if anyone else had the same idea on that topic because it came to a brunt stop and.
Yeah, I think, I think in, as far as the feasibility piece, where we've heard and I think in talking with the chair of that committee on Thursday, actually, she has said, she's been more than willing to come in and kind of wrap things up because they're done. That feasibility study is done. So it's now a decision this board needs to make to take it to the next level, to call it the Littleton Common Improvement Committee or whatever we see fit to take it, to take it to the next, next level. Littleton Common Infrastructure Improvement or Economic Development, something to that nature. But I think you're, you're right in, in the sense of.
Finish it.
Finish it.
Yep.
So I think one of the goals is identified right there. We need them to come in and give us the final report. And that'll help us decide who picks it up from there and, and what happens.
Good offer. We tend to use the terms interchangeably, objectives and goals, for example. And Alex, I'm going to use your comment there, if I may. We said the goal is to have them come in here and speak to us. I would say that's a milestone.
It is.
It's not a goal. The goal is something about the common. We want something to happen at the common and what that something is becomes that overarching goal. One of the objectives involved in that might be searing or at least information about searing, for example. It might be something about architecture, infrastructure, something about the road, on and on. And those become, there's objectives that support the goal of what do we want the common to be. And so, and I apologize because I've kind of taken the back door back to what I presented earlier, as far as a methodology. Each of these items that we've mentioned, I don't think are goals. I think they're objectives and milestones to the goal of improving the common. And then if improving the common is it and we're all happy with that, and then we're going to ask staff to go back and do some, looking at what has to happen, some of the objectives that are necessary to meet that. So it gets down to is what do we want out of the common? And that's a much more difficult goal to really articulate than just to say, improve the common. Because as we know, improve the common means different things to different folks. We've had those discussions in this room as to what that means.
I think that's a goal we can readily and quickly agree on. You know, the goal of looking at ways to improve the common.
Yeah, no, but my point there is, what does improve the common mean?
And how. That's, that's what we, that's, that's the goal. We got to figure that out.
Find that next.
Okay. The goal, the goal is to figure it out.
I'm buying into what you're saying. So the milestones are, get a report from the sewer committee and then we go down the list, you know, economic development, all those people. And that starts to put the circle around the goal.
Unfortunately, on this, this particular sewer feasibility thing, study committee is, is not so, not, not such a good conversation to have when we're, when we're dealing with this because it wasn't objective, it was completed and now it's time to move on. I think Mr. Knox, and one of his goals was establish Carmen Study Committee. And he briefly says something about, I mean, that's a start.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So that we can mold that into, to include infrastructure, you know? Because he's talking beautification issues. But that is a, that's a start of a goal for the Littleton Common. But we, you know, we need to energize the public. We need to get some involvement in the public. We need them to come out and get involved, so.
I think we have some intertwined things at the common too. Part of it is economic development and the other part, my other goal there when I was speaking too, really had to do with people who were concerned about the common, how it looks. And it, it, it does help economic development too. But certain people really want to go into depth on how they can approach people on the common, what they can do to, just to make it a focal point, which is in town, to make it look better without really going into the, maybe all the parts that helped with, with a, a plan for economic development too. So maybe some of these ideas are interchangeable in different, different subjects too.
It's just the visual aesthetics.
Yeah, exactly. But when, when speaking with a, a person that was interested in, in, in working on this, that person actually said, well, if, if there's different ideas that can help the common look better and make it more economic than pleasing, so, so attracts business. So it is mixed together too. It's just not a visual thing. But one leads to the other, I guess. So now how do you break this in? You mentioned that the, the common is the goal. Now how do we break that down?
I think you said it quite eloquently right here, you know? We need to get a committee together to, to take a look at, number one, what the feasibility study came up with, because that's part of the common, Area B. And then number two, what does that mean to economic development and the beautification of the common in itself and the usage?
I think you got those like reversed because what we, what we ought to discuss is what we want the common to be and use the information from the sewer study committee to, as part of the resources, to direct us in, towards that. I don't think the first move is to bring the sewer feasibility study committee in and say, okay, how do we improve the common? Our goal is how to improve the common and they are one of the steps we take to develop the information. Comes up with the grand plan, so to speak, of what is it that people want to do with the common?
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I think that the, the piece about bringing in the sewer feasibility, just to wrap that thing up, we should bring them in.
Get separate, in fact.
That's separately.
Yeah, in fact, I'm going to ask, if I may, if I can toss a hand grenade into this. And that is, we started with the chart. And I'm going to ask, what is, what are we really trying to accomplish as far as a town overall? We've talked a lot about a master plan here recently. A lot of this springs out of the master plan. And then who's going to be supporting that master plan becomes other goals and objectives. I'd ask that we consider maybe the first goal we discussed is a master plan. And the revamp of the current one written back in 2002. Because that, from there flows perhaps other goals that we want to support, where we want our town's master plan to be.
I agree.
Because I see three things that contribute to that. It's obviously the master plan itself, housing inventory, the economic development and conservation. Are three broad areas that folks are very interested in town and they would go to support that master plan. So I'd ask at least to consider, and I'm a newbie here, so I'm the youngest person on the board, right, sort of.
Well, I'm holding back, so keep going.
I'd ask that consideration, please.
Yeah, I, I think you're absolutely right that, that that's got to be part of the master plan. But there's a lot of other pieces too that are going to be part of that. I think that the master plan in itself and developing it is, got to absolutely be one of our goals. And I agree wholeheartedly that there are not only the common issue that we're talking about here, but there's going to be other issues that are going to be part of that master plan. The, you know, the Taylor Street and Upper Foster Street area, what, what's going to happen with that? What does the town want to, you know, is there an overlay district that may be possibly for up there? So that's absolutely going to feed up to the master plan. If you want to talk about the master plan right now, start there. I'm okay with that too because.
Because I think what you did is, is you took it out of the weeds when you said, rather than just speak about a specific location in town, you began speaking much more broadly as to how it would support that. And I think that's the level we want to be at this evening.
Yes. The only thing I, I ask you, Paul, is that you talked about the master plan as being a goal and it's, it's an important goal. I agree. But, and just like Mr. Cass said, things feed into it. But we also have to be working on, as people are working on that master goal, we still have to be working on goals and objectives that we have during the year when the master plan is being developed.
Don't disagree. Don't disagree one bit. But if we have a vision as to the direction we want to go in a master plan, that helps with these others, even the short-term goals. The long-term goal is only going to be filled by successful short-term goals.
So do we take the master plan and now off that master plan, now we have all these arms coming off of different topics and?
I'd suggest that, yes.
I mean, I think.
I think that's wise. And, and, you know, there's another point we all agree right away is that we need to support that master plan development. And how can we facilitate or assist in that process? Because I think we all agree that that master plan is really a keystone to what we're going to be doing.
That's for our next meeting though. To say that we want a master plan in development, I think that's, that's a, that's an overarching goal. And to say that we're going to.
So your implementation strategy on that, for example.
Develop the committee and work with the planning board.
Facilitate a discussion.
Step one.
A week from tonight at, at the board's request. Where, where you could begin to take the, the, the overall goal or objective of updating the master plan and then recognizing that there are a number of other elements that are part of that, including housing, which we're working on now, open space plan, which is, which that committee is working on now, economic development, which we don't actually have as a separate planning process with any, you know, funding or whatever. But there's a lot of elements and that, that need to be addressed. And I think we'll have the opportunity to, through the facilitated discussion that MAPC, that your request is going to come here and lead next Monday night. But I think you'll have the chance to be pulling all of those pieces together and giving some direction to that, to that undertaking, so.
And we play a key role in that because we're part of the resources. And we, we help provide the resources. And if we're going to do this and it's going to have to be a comprehensive plan and it's going to take into account what we're all thinking ought to be in there and what other people would want in there, including, you know, places like school committee and of course, planning boards integrated in development of it anyway, and others. Then, then our job is to provide the resources to make sure it gets done in a comprehensive manner. So that it is a truly workable document when it's done, that, that we can turn to. And that's, that's, some of that's just plain funding for the resources. And that's where we help.
So who had the goal for the master plan? What's, what's it worded like? We'll start there.
It's down in number six, six E.
Six E? We'll start there and wrap that one up and move on, I think. There we go.
And PJ has a narrative.
Mm-hmm.
Offering his call.
Which I like.
Where is it?
On page 10.
Yeah. Yeah, page 11, yeah. At the bottom.
10.
Oh, is it 10? Okay, oh, okay.
Page 10, yeah.
Yeah, mine's been renumbered because I just added N.
I like the way PJ wrote it down.
14 pages of goals.
It's good.
I'm up to 16 now.
True government.
Well, but it, it won't be that when you're done. It'll be, it'll be lean and mean because we're, this carries a lot of goals from last year, which you're not continuing.
Right. So, so, I mean, I, as Melissa said, PJ's got it written up very well. Create conditions for a successful revision of the town master plan. Dot one is commission a master plan steering committee. Dot two is public support for board of selectmen vision of the master plan.
Spot on.
We just got to, I think, you know, we got to throw a planning board in there somewhere in conjunction with.
And actually, I've done that as far as milestones that we coordinate with them as an example.
They will be the lead unless it's by, by stature.
Yep.
There is the statutory issues, that's the wrong way to put it, there are statutory requirements, it's really a respect. That what I'd offer is, what a selectmen is, we have the full faith and confidence of the people of the town that we're going to help guide in a direction the town should go. And that's why close coordination with the planning board, even acknowledging fully their statutory responsibilities and authority. But I, I think this board can offer leadership in that coordination process with the planning board. I don't think it's just a handoff to them and we sit back and watch what happens.
No, I don't think that.
No, it's not a handoff because.
No, it's not a handoff, 'cause they actually, they have to, they vote, they vote to approve it. We, the board, selectmen don't.
No, I understand, that's why I prefaced everything, understanding the statutory requirements. Nevertheless, I think we have a heavy responsibility is to work with them in, in that regard.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So, I think...
Moving on now.
Coordinating with the planning board.
Go into that.
That's one. All right, that's it.
Go back, go back to page one, let's talk about the common.
It's gonna take a lot of time and resources, we're done.
Actually, give, uh, newest selectmen some credit, too, 'cause under economic development, on page three, he lists down probably the, the main goal and other things that come after it. When you talk about economic development, so we could probably use a lot of that wording to say, this is what we're driving for under economic development, and have other things fall underneath that. The common being one...
Foster Street and Taylor Street.
I like that.
Yeah, we spend a lot of time focusing on the common, because we drive through it so much, but the bang for the buck might well be elsewhere...
Yeah.
...in this town. And, and, I mean, the economic development is, if that, the goal is economic development, we have to look at it objectively as to where we're, you know, where we can do that development and, and get the intended result, which would be increased revenue with minimal increased services to cover whatever it is that comes up.
Yep.
All right, so if we take that right up on economic development that PJ put in, and I think the only, the, the Taylor Street, Porter Road, and Upper Foster, that, that's a, a section of town that we've always been looking at, and then you have the 110 area moving towards there.
Yep.
Over by FIBA.
Right, right. So, if we include, roll them areas into his objective here, I think that's a pretty good...
Can we say includes Littleton Common, so we grab that?
Correct.
Foster...
Foster, Porter, Taylor, Depot. Depot, good one.
Air Road.
And then the Air Road.
Air Road.
Yeah. And that kinda touches on other goals that we've had, and that, so...
I like it.
That's two.
Do we put in, uh, commuter rails in the same topic?
I think we might wanna have that as a standalone. One, it's, 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 this will be a critical period, I think, where we'll be planning in the next eighteen months for what do we do when we get increased service at the commuter rail station, and...
There's a lot of outside agencies that have...
Yeah.
...got their fingers in that.
Yeah, we're really coordinating with a, with a lot. If you look at goal one, proposed one E, I think if...
And, you know, rail is one mode of transportation, so the, the overarching goal, I think, is something that deals with transportation, and what do we wanna achieve, you know, transportation-wise for the town? Rail, bus, automobiles, bicycles, pedestrians.
And we got a lot of input about the bicycles and things like that, so the bike paths.
So, those are all things that feed into a transportation goal.
But I think to Keith's point in regards to the, the dual railing and the dual tracks, I mean, and the possibility of, um, more parking coming up, and the state trying to buy some more, I'd like to see that whole area just as one goal, so we can see, we gotta keep an eye on the, the, the tracking, we gotta keep an eye on the parking situation, we gotta keep an eye on the infrastructure of Foster Street and the impact of all that traffic on that road, so...
Because the ability to increase rail passenger traffic there, people using it, getting on and off, and especially off on reverse commute, now, there's those nodes, and that becomes a node, and now, where's the other node? Is it IBM? Surely, that's the biggest one.
Yeah, and it's the shuttle that will be, that will need to be in place by Jan, January 2016, and how we're planning for that with our area, with our neighboring communities, with our area businesses, there's a lot of, I mean, that's sort of, that'll be the critical focus of the Cross Town Connect Transportation Management Association, it's been set up. It's largely for businesses, it's, it's largely, you know, to, to be able to connect where people live to where they work, and to meet the goals of the, you know, the, the reverse commute.
So, if I, I may make a suggestion that, you know, as you said, PJ, having, yes, that's one way of transportation, let's, let's make that the focal point, and then, from there, put in, how do you wanna call it, shuttling or transportation services?
Yeah.
So that...
It's definitely included.
So that it's included in that, in there to be part of the rail system.
Can I go back to the, when we were talking about different areas, when talking about economic development, and make sure we include the point, because that's still part of what's going on?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
So, we can keep track as a board on what goes on there, how successful it is, and...
Yeah. If they're in the market basket, pick it ourselves. We don't, we're only guessing what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
And, you know, you go some of these places where they put a series of lights in, and take a ride down through Westford right now...
Yeah, exactly.
And, and understand that it takes so long to get so far. We don't know what the impact is yet, and we, and we oughta be ready to assess that as soon as it starts hitting us.
And that'll be something that'll continue after it opens up, and we have to take a look at it.
And in this economic development, we've been addressing primarily retail and office. We realize there's many more opportunities for economic development in town, whether it's farming, or some sort of conservation, entertain, entertainment, perhaps, but recreation, I guess, better term, I'd rather use.
Yeah.
Those areas, perhaps not on the volume of dollars in revenue, but nevertheless, revenue in then, you know, for just the aesthetics of the town, as to what we see the character of the town as being, too, they contribute. So, that's economic development, too, that, don't wanna lose in the weeds, as we talk about what would seem the low-hanging fruit, just because of the dollar value.
Take them first, though.
I, I think that's a good point. I mean, we have to consider, I think, open space and, and, you know, how we plan for it is part of economic development. If we plan for one and not the other, then, then we're gonna find ourselves in a place that's undesirable.
It all comes together in a way as to, what we use land for one purpose, it's not usable for another purpose. So, that becomes part of the decision matrix, too, understanding that, you know, that's an opportunity cost.
Yeah.
As to what can't we do if we do something else? And there's nothing right or wrong about that, you know, decide, or not decide, but get, gather information, then make decisions.
Moving on. Did I see number three? Is that number three, or is that number two?
That was, you got three. You got the master plan, you got economic development, and transportation.
Perfect.
Not necessarily in that order.
Nope.
Although, maybe.
I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, the, I think, the update for the road improvement plan is always a popular goal for us to achieve, and I think it's been doing well.
That's actually something that we also be happy, the accomplishments that we've made and the, and the progress we've made, but the, one of the best parts is that we've been able to reevaluate as road conditions change, and through our highway department, reevaluate what needs to be done next, so, we obviously have to keep that there. Would that be under services, and would that be under...
Town services?
Yeah, you keep it under town services, yeah. Sorry.
Would you consider infrastructure as a whole, though? Roads are infrastructure. Plowing the road is the service.
You know, it's, it's such a...
Is that the road you wanna go down?
Okay, I get it now, I'm sorry, guys.
He was waiting for that, too.
It's such a, it's such a hot item, and people wanna pay a lot of attention to that improvement. I think if we, I don't wanna diminish the importance of roads. Services, sure, I mean, the plowing, that's part of the highway and all that, but there hasn't been any complaints about my road. Well, there have been, but they're private.
There's a purity to it. If you say infrastructure, someone's gonna say, oh, you mean sewer?
Right, right. I mean...
You mean, you know...
Specifically, though, specifically for roads improvements, and the way that the town, I see it, and, and hearing from a lot of people in town, is, I wanna know what roads are being done...
Yes.
When they're being done, and what stage they're at, and where do I fall in the list?
Those are milestones, huh?
They are absolutely milestones, but the, the, the overarching goal is the development of this...
I can buy into that.
Road, yeah?
I'm not gonna structure this on that, it's too important.
So, you want it to stand alone?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think...
How do people pay attention to that?
For good reason.
For good reason. Sorry, why don't I back up?
You know, just a comment about that, when you think about it, you go back to the last two projects, Harvard Road, it was almost a point where mountain goats would take another route to go down Harvard Road, and it got fixed. And now, Nishoba Road is, take a trip down there recently, that's, that's, that's a trip across the Baja right now, and we're just, we're just, what's they call it, just-in-time? Just-in-time with this stuff.
I like the mountain goat reference.
But, those roads were done based on this plan.
Yeah.
And that shows...
And changes that we made to this plan.
Exactly, and that goes to show what Joe was saying earlier, how, you know what, it, it involves the, the department, it involves the public, it involves that list and that plan to be changeable and fluid, you know, based on the needs of the town, so...
So, is that four?
Yep, that's four.
Jimmy Flexibility's the key to air power.
I have no doubt.
Okay, what's number five as the main goal or subject? Do we wanna talk about services as one? Services could include an awful lot of subsections.
Well, one of mine was, had to do with, that they're working with Director of Elder and Human Services for the increased population, and improved COA services. So, I see Alex had one, Paul had one.
Just, I had one talking about pine tree.
Just wanna jump around on that one. I think, you know, we've heard from Pamela that, you know, that's a, one of the segments of our populations that are growing steadily and fast, so, I think we should, as a board, set some type of goal out there to take a look at those services, and see what we can do with the COA, to work with the COA to better serve our seniors. What is that, is it a goal?
I like the way you worded it, you worded it really well.
And you have a lot of, if you set that goal as senior services, then you have a lot of benchmarks or...
Yeah.
...milestones that you already mentioned a second ago, that all fall off that main topic.
And it's human services, too.
Human services, correct, yeah.
I mean, they're, they're doing some awfully good work with some people that are not seniors.
Right, right. Gotcha, true.
So, and, and the other thing that's good about that idea is, this is a problem that's gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger. It's a growing thing for many years to come.
Okay, so the overarching goal, I'm gonna throw it out there, work with the Director of Elder and Human Services to increase slash improve COA-type services?
COA and human services.
And then, if we wanna throw in any, any specific needs, or, you know, I mean, that's a, that's a broad-based statement. What does that include?
Are they gonna be a separate subject? Is that under, under town services, or is it just COA services and human services being separate?
Yeah, that's great. I mean, Keith, you put it under organizational.
Yeah, we can put it in under services.
Services.
Actually, the way, what I'm envisioning that it'll look like, it's gonna be a much, you know, based on what you're saying here, you're gonna, you got a much simpler list this year, this, if we're up to five now. So, we, we may just have, you may just have, let's say, ten goals that read like this instead of the categories, like, we had a category of economic development and then a dozen separate things. Now, we've got, you can have one economic development goal that incorporates it all. So, if you wanted it to be, you know, a town services goal focusing on elder and human services, maybe that's what you do.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think originally you put that under organizational, because at that time we were changing the organization.
Right, yeah, that was the focus.
Now, we're supporting the organization that we, that we've, we've created.
Yeah, I made it, obviously, quite a bit broader, you know, calling it age-specific demographic groups, and then certainly elder services, human services in general, children, I wanna be able to address all those in addition. COA, certainly, and the elder services warrants our focus, and to have it as its own particular objective, or excuse me, goal, is not necessarily bad. If we're gonna go down that road, fully supportive, or if you just wanna put it under, you know, human services of the town, and then, you know, objectives under that to support it, that'd go either way.
You're, you're saying more on the, the town administration side, Paul? Is that what you're saying, or...
Oh, no, no, not town administration, but addressing, addressing the entire town, human services, if you will. And I view, if you describe that in a very broad context of, what are we doing for elders? What are we doing for the middle-aged, if you will? What are we doing for the children of the town? Do those become separate, uh, goals themselves, or do we stop here? You brought up a very good point about human services in general, and, you know, what Pam and her folks do is much broader than just elder services.
Yeah, I think, well, the title, Elder and Human Services, I think that's...
That encompasses a lot.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a resource organization to help people that need resources, whether it be referrals, or, you know, fuel assistance, or whatever it is. So, you're suggesting we just say human services, or, or just, can we say elder and human services?
My initial view of it was, from birth through death, and as a broad overall goal, is, you know, addressing people in town. I think the consensus seems to be narrowing down, is, let's make the elder and human services its own at this point, and then press on from there, and I'm sanguine with that.
I think, I think it's just due to the fact we have a department that fits that. I, I don't think we have any other department created to expand on, you know...
We have other departments and committees that were taught it, correct?
Correct, yeah. I mean, so...
So, I believe what he has as number five, what are the services, should be, or should we have any other services that we're talking about as far as town, town run go?
Do you wanna put public safety under that, or be it its own?
I think traditionally, public safety stands alone in a small group of, of three functions, emergency management, police, and fire EMS. And I think, I think that, that's a good fit. I don't know that we really wanna move all of that under human services.
No, no, not on human services, no, 'cause I thought we did elder and human services.
That's it.
Yeah, and now, I think Joe meant services.
Yeah, I meant other ser, let's, let's talk about...
Okay, okay.
Number, number six, if you wanna put it that way for now.
Well, with respect to... Well, with respect to emergency services, I think that group should stand alone.
I would agree because one of the main objectives of any board to select one is public safety. Probably one of the, probably the top goal of.
One of the top things, of government in general.
Of government, yeah.
It's supposed to be public safety.
And so I would.
And taxation. And they do the second one really, really well.
So what are you talking about a goal for our public safety folks? What is, what is that type of goal? Just to review or to, you know? What is it, what is it you want the folks in public safety to do? What is our goal for that? I didn't put anything down. I think, I think we have, we hire, you know, the chiefs, we have a town administrator and we rely on them to run their departments. I guess if, well, we could maybe roll in maybe the fire station funding.
That would be a public safety.
Issue, yeah, yeah. But I can't, I'm just trying to think aloud here. What else is there?
I have the same question.
And not so much day-to-day operations.
Right, big picture type.
But, okay, so where are we five years from now? Where are we headed? What are the trends? What do we have to, what are the watchouts for public safety? A year ago, you had implementing the fire staff increases as one of your goals. And the year before that, it was included as well. Well, we're, we're there. So next thing is the facility, so.
But I still think you have to put it under that main subject of emergency services, whatever you want to call it. Because, sure.
Public safety is the verb. Is it enhance, improve, expand, contract? What's the verb you want to pick as to what you want to see happen with public safety in town?
Enhance and review?
It may well be, review might be it and the goal could be, review the adequacy of public safety in the town of Littleton. And then under that, we're already downtracked with a new fire station or at least a revamped fire station, if we want to look at that. So that's certainly one objective that contributes towards public safety in town under the fire department. Is it the manning in the police department? When the police chief comes to us and speaks to it, is that going to be part of the review process? If that's what we choose, how we want to approach this, or do we just say enhance? What the heck's enhance mean?
Support.
We call it LMAP, or that whole map thing. You ever get a private conversation?
I'm trying to think. I have a block. I understand what you're saying and I know exactly what you want and I can't think.
No, it's because we all want good public safety.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We all want world peace. But now, how do we articulate that well so that we can devote resources to it?
So it's a goal.
Yeah.
Well, ensuring adequate public safety or something, I don't know. But we do that, let me say, we do that whether you establish it as a goal or not.
A goal, yeah, yeah, yeah. It shouldn't be a goal.
Right.
I think the way we do that is we take the long view and say, you know, what action we want is, is what's come. Whether something's inadequate at the moment is an operational matter, pretty much. But what we want to see is a combined vision of public safety. Well, I actually have an out for you on this and I think that ultimately, ensuring the adequacy of public safety services is linked to what kind of community we're becoming, what kind of development occurs. And those are among, and the facility, there's a whole facilities component, facilities and services component of the master plan process that you're, that we're committed to. And, and that may be the most appropriate place for that review to take place.
Or, let me, let me interject here. I think I just thought of it. Our overarching goal is to task our public safety departments with some type of five-year strategic plan. So that, so that way there, you know, they report back to us what their outlook is in the next five years. And that way there, that leads into the master plan.
Did I tell you you're brilliant?
That one almost, I was trying, I was trying to think of it. I had a total block. I had a total block.
So reword that so we can make it a goal.
I think the public safety, have public safety departments develop a strategic, a five-year strategic plan.
That's it. That's all you need. Develop a five.
To be incorporated or that may be incorporated into the master plan. So that kind of ties it into the master plan.
Reduce the conditional and that it will be.
It will be. There you go. Shall be. Right, there you go.
Part of the, if this plan is developed, much like the last one, there was a big component in there about public safety and the master plan.
Yeah.
There was a lot of effort put in there. I went to a lot of meetings on that.
As well it should be. I mean, and this way here gives our chiefs the ability to have a voice. Not that they don't, because they can speak very well.
This circles back to our being able to, you know, search for resources and understand where we have to put resources.
Right.
Because we could say, you know, sitting with ninety-two hundred people in Littleton, we're content with the public safety services we have. But now, a year from now, is it going to be ninety-seven hundred? Five years? Ten thousand? What's it going to be? You're looking at that dildo. So, well done, Jim.
All right, there we go.
Rock and roll.
Okay, next.
I'm hoping in that discussion somewhere, you know, down the list is that we get back on the discussion of regionalized dispatch, which.
That would all be under that main goal, yeah.
I mean, that's been a pet peeve of mine for quite some time and we now have an excellent working example, very close to us that we can go by.
Well, it goes back to what was developed at the very beginning, those links coming off the main subject.
Well, what about this for number six?
Don't we have emergency management folks also?
Well, it's fire. Part of fire, it's the fire, yeah.
What about our usual opportunities?
It's part of public safety.
What's that now?
No, health is part of public health.
You're going to put it under zone?
Yeah, it's not part of, you know, public safety in Littleton is police and fire.
Yeah, because public, I mean, the board of health controls all the elected board.
I get that. I just see them as in a broad public safety perspective.
I think that'll be part of some type of strategic plan with the emergency management for sure, you know.
That would be the hook to include health because that's where they are joined with the public safety departments. Maybe something in fiscal?
Yeah.
Well, that's coming up. I've got a couple of those.
Fire station one, there's a lot of synergy there.
So are we going to tackle anything in organizational?
Boy, I think we have to. Organizational, wouldn't that also include bylaws if you, organizational, so we want to?
I would sort of like to see us take another look at some of the stuff the government study committee did and maybe look to enhancing some of the things. Centering around the town administrator, things like places where we can get into trouble as novices, hiring practices, HR, and that sort of thing.
I think you're just talking about bylaw reviews, Alex. I mean, the government study committee came out with recommendations for bylaw changes. So I think, to your point, you know, we need to make a decision, okay, what bylaws do we, do you want to look at? A bylaw that's in regards to hiring practices or, what else would you say?
HR.
HR, human resources. You know, I know recently that, that whole HR thing in the past five years have pretty much been revamped. Maybe it's time to, maybe it's time to, just for the board to take a look at it, pick it, review it and say, looks good, move on.
How about annual organizational review? And that would encompass what you just said, would encompass other bylaws?
But if we can narrow it down to, I think as Paul, Paul put it was to, let's get a, let's get a number out there. To say organizational review, do we just, let's have a minimum of four reviews, whether it be bylaws, whether it be role policy into it. Three policies and a bylaw.
Well, I think when you look at, like, if there's going to change the functions of the town administrator, that has to be sort of, I mean, I really would like to go back and review again what the government study committee did, what we implemented and what we didn't. And Joe knows all of this off the top of his head, but.
Ten years ago.
But, yeah, that's, that's my point. It's ten years ago. Now, do we want to make some changes? And I think that's more than just a bylaw review, that's a general, you know, how do we operate? Do we want to change the way we operate somewhat? Do we want to? You know, some of those recommendations that they said we needed to wait on, maybe it's time to not stay there anymore and move ahead and say, okay, well, why don't we consider implementing some of the things that weren't implemented the first time? Because the town's grown, you know, the need for professional services has grown.
Overall, I'll agree with what you just said too, because I can remember way back when we, we did that. We stopped at certain points when we had the idea what would actually fly in town right now and what wouldn't.
Absolutely.
At that point, we have, I'm going to say fourteen different finals subjects that we went after. Some of them we never did and haven't done to now, but some of them was that next step of organization in town hall that we didn't do at the time, so that.
What did the goal look like?
Review the status.
Review the statuses?
And then develop steps ahead.
Or do we, do we create the, just look at it and start a new government study committee or just?
Maybe with bathwater yet.
Yeah.
To say, review it first and then determine steps forward.
We should dust off the plan and have that be part of what, what our reading is going to be and see where we go from there.
Keith is clicking on it. No, right there, there it is.
Long list, look at all that stuff.
All right, so make it a goal. We don't need to review it now, Mr. Burton.
The night is young. So.
That fell off real quick, didn't it?
So what do you want to call it? Town government, I'm sorry, study review or?
Organizational study.
Town government organizational review.
Sounds good.
What was it called?
Town government.
It was called a town government study committee.
Okay. Isn't that right, Mr. Lady?
That's right, sir. Right man for the job too, didn't we?
You talked me into that.
That was some of the best work I've seen people do is that, the work on that committee because there were some very delicate things that had to be addressed. And the committee did a good job with it. They really did.
Without getting people too upset about it either.
So is this what you mean to say, town government organizational review, review, update recommendations of the town government study committee?
Nice.
Yeah, I'd offer and determine the way ahead.
There you go. Looking forward.
And determine.
The way ahead.
The way ahead.
Path forward, flight plan.
Onward.
Whatever you wish.
No.
But you only have three more goals.
This doesn't include your bylaw thing yet.
Yeah. Organization bylaw, that's part of organization?
Review the bylaw. If we can, you can certainly say includes the review of bylaws, unless you'd like to have a standalone one there.
Well, think of that. I mean, I thought, you know, the ones that we did actually look at worked.
This is the standalone goal we've had before review.
And we've done what, six, seven?
We've done that every year and it's always, you know, it's.
It's always been successful.
Yeah.
I would say keep it separate because I think it, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go with that.
Could you think of it, maybe it's just a process? It's an ongoing process?
Well, it is, but if we don't write it down, we don't do it. Because we get so busy.
We always do reference back to it.
Yeah, we always do reference back.
But everything the board does is not an objective. Serves towards an objective.
Well.
Or a goal. Something that's just process.
Some of it is subjective, isn't it?
Like establishing an agenda, you have to use a very simple example. Hopefully, that's not a goal, have an object, an agenda done every day or every meeting. It's just a process.
Yeah, is there like a roles and responsibility thing? Like here's all the, maybe it's a two-hundred-page thing, I don't know. But, you know, here's all the things that you have to do no matter what, right? Every year, that's going to happen and then here's some special above and beyond. Are they kind of mixed in and we use them for both?
Well, like some of, like, for example, on, every year, the board spends a huge amount of quality time dealing with fiscal policy and what the budget looks like.
Yeah.
And typically, we always, you know, adopt a goal along those lines. But it's, but that's just the, to write it down on the list is just the tip of the iceberg because it's so consuming what we do.
Since you're talking fiscal.
Is it in or is it out? What are we doing with it?
What's that? No, I, what, the review bylaw?
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm good with it.
I'd put it in.
I think you just wanted to modify it as what?
I think it could become part of a process. It's just an ongoing process. So you're not going to get big ejection out of me on this.
You know, the, here's, here's the thing, here's the thing with bylaws though, you know, it takes a town to change them. So the more public it is, the more we talk about it, the better off we are, in my opinion.
How many have we, any idea how many we've done in the last three years? Ten, twelve? At least a dozen, yeah. Some of them were major and a number of them were minor. We deleted a lot of redundant language.
Cleaned up with the laws changing.
A lot of the committee, board and committee ones, we redid PMBC, Council on Aging, Conservation Commission. Because some of, when we, when we go to do something, that's when we find we have to change a bylaw. When we want to do something and find out the bylaw is not letting us do it. So I go back to the board of participation, a simple thing of delivering the law. You know, we have to change a bylaw to get that done.
Yep, yep. So what's that? So fiscal. Now, this is, you know, I think that the way we've been in the budget process past four or five years has been wonderful with the school committee, the FinCom, taking lead on the whole budget process and getting everybody together that Saturday, that Saturday of, you know, pulling our way through the entire budget has been very beneficial to the town and the departments. So I'm trying to think of, there's, there's a couple twists to it. What are the goals? Whose fiscal?
Section four is fiscal. You have like preparing the budget, updating the fiscal policies.
Page one.
Yeah, page six.
I didn't know if this year, since it's the first time we could ever have such a goal, if you'd want to actually say maintaining the town's AAA bond rate, which is a, talking about a goal.
I think part of that would be, continue to support the fiscal policy working group. You know, that's, that, that group is our conduit to reviewing not only existing but for changing and any, you know, this is the first year we can save AAA. Well, that's going to be incorporated into our policy.
Yeah.
So part of that is to say, let's support that group, you know, or task them, you know, what is that overarching goal that we're looking for to support that group to develop? We've had this in the past, the TIF, the whole TIF authorization and committee and how it was done and why it was done and what the theory behind TIFs were. You know, it's, this is how we did it and this is, why do we do it? Because that's how we do it. So I think that, you know, again, we need to get a broad goal and I'm trying to think when I'm on the fly here instead of all these little objectives that we want to do for fiscal management.
I think one of the major contributors to our, where we are now is, started with the work of the government study committee, but, but then we brought the professionals in such as our finance people that could take us there. They're truly professionals. And I think one of our goals has to be to maintain that level of professionalism in the finance department. Let's say something happens, somebody moves on or, you know, whatever it is. I think we have to find ways to maintain. I think we have to find ways to maintain that high level, high standard.
So, what's the over...
Wheels can come off the wagon pretty quickly.
The overarching goal, what is the, the umbrella of it all?
How do you state that?
And, and what do we, what do we say to, you know, to include Explore Increasing Senior Tax Workoff Program, Fiscal Year 2016 Plan It With FinCom In Schools, been a wonderful process. Explore Other Tax Release For Seniors, the TIF, Fiscal Policy Work Group. Uh, how do we deal with funding, uh, the new fire station or other large projects that may be in the horizon? Sure, that's part of the Fiscal Policy Work Group, um, but is that an overarching goal? What is, what is that overarching goal? And that's, that's a tough one. I could not come up with one, so I'm looking for...
The other thing we have to roll into that, you know, toward what I said, is succession planning. Uh, is the department well-equipped to handle a sudden massive change, for whatever reason that brings it about?
All right, so let's talk about the, the strategic plan we placed on our, uh, public safety folks. Why don't we have a strategic plan for our fiscal matters? And what it, what it looks like now, and what is the forecast for the future? I mean, um, that is a, that is a goal, I think, that would be a tool, an instrument, that as a board we could use to strategize moving forward, along with the FinCom.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, I read all two-hundred pages of the regulations and policies, but this I don't remember. And that is, and so here's my ignorance, do we have a policy, and it's specific to your point about succession, do we have a policy that directs each department to have a succession plan? And that's, that's a separate issue from objectives and goals.
No, actually, no, there was, there was a...
Only ask the question, but...
No, there was a, either, I forget if it was a goal or a task or whatever, to do succession planning and it, and that issue has been one that the Personnel Board has been working on with the, with the department.
Yes, I'd say, it's, it's not a particular fiscal objective or goal, I would say, but it's something we need to address, obviously. And you are addressing it, as you're saying, with the Personnel Board.
For us as a board, it's particularly, you know, I like the way Jim worded it better than what, the way I worded it in succession planning. So, I, I, you know, I, I think for a board, making sure that all the components of our financial, uh, department, for lack of a better word, or, or segment, um, are addressed and addressed comprehensively.
Oh, don't disagree, but you're saying we should have best business practices in our finance department, but we're not addressing that in any of our other departments, because that would fall under every single department we have in the town.
Well, we're doing, but we're doing it. For the people who control it.
We're doing it, though, and in part, and it's in part, um, professional development in part. But, but it's, it's right now been tasked to the Personnel Board, so...
But a fiscal policy goal, objective, succession plan, I just don't see it falling under there.
But a strategic plan for the, for the, for the, for the town side, I think, is something that our, our financial folks can do. Now, we can...
Oh, they're the ones who do it?
Yeah, yeah.
But wait, you're saying one thing in succession plan means to me...
I, I didn't say succession plan. I didn't say succession.
Okay, that's why I, I think that's not on the table.
He's taking it back.
They retract and accept it.
We're back to a strategic plan for fiscal.
Succession planning is being dealt with at the Personnel Board level, so...
I just, it was just a poor choice of words.
But I think that, you know, uh, to your point, um, roll the schools into this, you know, as some type of fiscal strategic plan.
Yes, and as you were, you know, playing with some thoughts, I was sitting here similarly inside my cranium, though, trying to think of how do you make that overarching, um, goal, so to speak?
Right.
Because it's easy to say, you know, fiscal discipline.
Yeah.
Got it. Um, but how do we articulate that well, so that the objectives support it? So, just, you know, live within our means, uh, don't bust two and a half, um, have no overrides. I don't know, see those as constructive goals.
We don't wanna go there.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, that's getting down into...
Hundred percent.
No, it's about long-term financial planning, I think.
Right, yeah.
And there's a lot of pieces that come into that, including revenue, you know, various revenue sources and what the levels of spending that support that.
And, you know, I think that the, um, FinCom is, you know, got a pretty good handle on that, too, so...
I would often, maintaining the AAA bond rating is not a goal. It's a result. And here's why I don't think it's a good goal at all. Um, we can tell one of your college students, I want you to get straight A's. And the kid can go pick any class, that's gonna be real easy and get the straight A's, and indeed will have met the goal of straight A's. But now, you want the child to get an education, there may be a B or C in there. I'm not advocating we get a B or C bond rating, so please don't misunderstand the analogy. But to say the goal is, get straight A's, is a bad goal for a student. And I would say, and this, if you will, is a grade, is what the bond rating is.
It is a, it's a, it's a, it's a grade, but there's certain behavior that you adopt. If it's important to you, if it's not important to you, then you can, I think the community can do anything you want.
There's, there's nice interest. What are the goals that achieve the result? Okay, that's a grade. That's, that's not a goal.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we can, um, uh, put that as a bullet point, and then maybe have some other bullet points within that overarching goal that this board deem important, i.e., i.e. is, you know, policy to maintain AAA bond rating. Develop a TIF Authorization Committee or Policy Within, with FinCom. So, that's a strategic plan fiscally, with these different bullets that the board feels are important to be part of that strategic plan, instead of just saying, okay, here are my projections, here are my expenses for the next five years. Well, that's easy. That's numbers. But part of the strategic plan, we need to develop, um, a policy for the TIF. The review policies to maintain, because the AAA rating is based on policy and, and how we handle our fiscal...
And actual execution.
Stability and actual execution, absolutely, so...
As a town, if we make some decisions that maybe for the criteria of the rating agency is a double A, but we think it's the best for the town and it serves the town best, would you say, no, we won't do that? I'll do what's second or third best, just to keep the AAA rating?
No. We wanna do what's best for the town.
That's why I don't think AAA rating is the goal.
But that's why I say if we put it in as, you know, this board thinking the overarching goal is to have a fiscal policy strategic plan, what, what, what do we wanna, what do we wanna see inside of that as a board? One piece being the, the, the policy for the AAA ratings. Personally, I, you know, the, the TIF, I have an issue with, um, the fiscal, uh, you know, fiscal year sixteen fiscal planning, uh, with Fin, with FinCom and schools. Maybe that's another goal for budgetary, fiscal year budgetary, uh, objective.
But, but I think that where we are now with our AAA rating is a result of strategic planning that brought us to where we are today. And what you're talking about is the specifics of our particular thoughts within some underlying place in all of that.
Right.
Yeah, I think, um...
So, I don't think we, I, I think it's a little early to outline those individually.
Keith, what a nice start into something on nine there.
Yeah, I, I guess the updating fiscal policy is able to maintain the role of planning, including...
I mean, you had mentioned other bullets, which we can put in there, too.
We can add them.
But, and I get it that we, the goal isn't to advertise that we maintain the bond rating for its own sake. It's that we're developing a fiscal policy strategic plan.
That best serve...
Mindful, you know, mindful of the town's AAA bond rating or something, so...
Yeah.
And, and I'll be honest, I can't buy AAA bond rating in the goal statement at all, um, because of the reasons I already stated.
That's, um, it's definitely, it's definitely a scorecard, and we are not in complete control of what that is. But if what it means is that that's not important to us, I, I think that would send a bad signal.
To be clear, the bond rating is important. I've touted it, I've advertised it, I've echoed it, minimized myself. So, it's not an, uh, it's not assertion on my part, it's not important. Being able to do things that reflect well with rating agencies is important to me. We should be revising, updating financial plans, fiscal policies, whatever, that best serve the needs of the town of Littleton. And if those best, and the process of serving those best needs, or best serving those needs, excuse me, results in a rating agency giving us a AAA, great.
I think...
And if it results in us being downgraded?
That's poor...
Well, I asked that question earlier.
That's, that's gonna come back on us.
I asked that question earlier.
I think, I think I... I, I kind of agree with what you're saying. What I don't know is, how often does it happen, and I know things change, but how often does it happen that something that you need to keep the AAA bond rating is gonna be something we would disagree with as a town, that would negatively impact us? Is that like a never circumstance, or is that like a fifty percent times circum... You know, how mindful of that do we have to be? Because conceptually, I agree with you, but in my head, which may be naive, the things that would get you a AAA bond rating should be a good thing, right? Those are behaviors you'd want to promote. So, I think it's, I think it's a real good achievement that we have, and I definitely support it. I don't know, that's where I'm at.
We talked about accelerating the road improvement program as one possibility. That's gonna require money coming from someplace. We're talking about a new fire station or remodel fire station. That's gonna require money from someplace and certain funding mechanisms to take place. If we, as a town, decide we want both those to happen, and a rating agency may say, hey, that puts you, you know, a tenth of a percent over our criteria to be in the AAA, would we then not do it because of that?
Yeah, conceptually, I agree.
We'd hope we'd have a very serious discussion about that, because it's, um, because it's such a ripple effect.
With all the bonds and anything else that we have...
And as Sam rates and, you know, the less risk is associated with a better bond rating.
Well, I, I agree with what you're saying, but I'd like to find a way of keeping that there somehow.
Yeah.
If it's a bullet or something underneath it that says, you know, with the hope that we keep this AAA...
Yeah, something like that.
Because what you said, I agree with.
Right.
You know, if, if there's something that has to be done that might...
We shouldn't just teach to the test, if what you're saying is that, that, um...
Couldn't have said it better if I was on the school committee. Well done.
But, but at the, but at the same time, you know, mindful of the town's AAA bond rating, that we would, you know, we'd task the finance team...
Mr. Lady...
The AAA bond rating, even though it's a scorecard, is in there because it also identifies a set of best practices. And, and we don't wanna go down the path of, well, this is what the town wants, therefore it's what's good for the town, and, and lose sight of best practices, best financial practices.
Yeah.
So, so, so we need that scorecard. We need somebody, we need something that says, we're going to be, uh, employing the best possible financial policies. We can do it. And if we do it well, then we're gonna end up with a AAA bond rating. And anytime we consider a project, that has to be a major consideration in the project.
Yeah.
If I, if, if I might, I normally wouldn't recognize the audience, but I'm Mr. Lady...
I wasn't sure what your protocol on that was, just on this topic, don't I?
You're on the finance committee, if you have something you wanna add.
Yeah, and not to be lost sight of in this is that not all of the factors in a bond rating are things within the town's control. Yes, the financial policy's having them. Two, implementing them. Three, the overall financial health of the town is, you know...
The regional economy, we have no control of.
The economy is very much an item over which we don't have control, and I'm as proud as anyone else is about the AAA bond rating. But factors beyond our control could cause us to lose that, um, you know, even while we're maintaining good practices elsewhere. So, I'm inclined to...
This may be the way to say it.
...approach to, to focusing on good practices rather than on what reward you might get for it at the end of the, at the end of the process. Highest, maybe the, you know, the highest bond rating possible, you know, which may or may not be a AAA in certain years.
I, I guess I'd suggest if we just, you know, take the opportunity to acknowledge that we're AAA and mindful of where we are, task the finance team to develop the, the fiscal policy strategic plan.
Mindful doesn't hold us to it, and we should be mindful of it. I think that's a good way to put it.
We're perhaps mindful of all the good things and all the goals as we go through it.
But that's important ones to be...
Sometimes, you know, we're, we're all, we're all, no one around here didn't tout AAA, so we just...
Okay, feel like a, you know, a salmon swimming upstream for the moment, so not to belabor it.
How about if you move the mindful to the other end, um, and say, while mindful?
At the, yeah, the end of the sentence.
Of the town's AAA bond rating. In other words, you develop the policies and you're, and that must be part of the consideration of the policy to do it that way.
You mean at the end there?
Yeah.
Because what you make important to a subordinate, usually subordinate will work toward, and...
And we can give guidance throughout the process, though. If we say mindful, it doesn't hold us to, you know, doing everything that keeps it there. It just says when things come up, you know, we have to take that into consideration. And if people are kind of going off track, regardrails there to keep them on the right track. I think we're all on the same page.
I think this, this would task staff to be mindful, and then if, if, when you're making a policy, you've got one of those, you know, momentous decisions to make, do you, do you solve a problem in a way that is, that the bond rating agency may not like? Well, you will make that decision, staff won't, so, not if we can help it.
We're afraid to...
We don't wanna inadvertently, staff, we're not gonna inadvertently do anything to the bond rating agency.
What I would do, Keith, is take the comma out and put in the word while mindful of the town. So, the two have enough separation that the policy isn't being built totally around AAA.
Right.
What about a semicolon?
Yeah.
I don't know, I like the comma, well...
We could debate that for a while.
I'm good. Semicolon looks good. You have a problem with semicolon?
We'd have to have as a goal, hire a cromarian. All right, so what's one?
Get out of here at nine-thirty, because you wanna talk about sentences.
I thought we were gonna go to ten tonight.
If we're lucky.
Next meeting, can we ask Jim to diagram sentences for us?
We, we kept the whiteboard there.
I was gonna say, we need a whiteboard. Yeah, there we go.
Remember the years of, well, it started with Reed, and then it went to, who was it? Ken? Ken Eldredge, who was big on...
No one ever beat Reed, though. I never saw anyone draw so much on the board.
God bless him.
I didn't understand half of it either.
I didn't know we could do that.
Great, we had a point that I only can...
We gotta get some markers up there again.
Would you mind if in the master plan one, where we're talking about that, if we made mention of the housing plan and the open space?
Yeah, no, no.
I mean, they need to be somewhere on it, and I think it would be best to, if we could, they don't, I...
Good thought, good thought.
Given the short list, I, I don't think everything needs to, um, needs to be in a separate goal, but I'd like those...
Yeah, housing inventory, conservation.
Housing, uh, production, includes updating...
What about regulatory? Should probably get something for regulatory, I think.
Going back to what pages?
Some of them might fall under the master plan.
Nine. Housing Committee, we've got Housing Authority. And the Housing Authority, um, that's a good one, Joe.
But that would, the Housing Authority would fall under...
Yeah, that's not the housing plan, though. Actually, the Housing Authority is supposed to be the regulatory board that handles all our, I think, the overseers of the, um, forty Bs and...
No, they're only of the public housing.
It's just the public.
Yeah.
But, you know...
But I, I think this is an important, it's on my page ten that I had written out about the Housing Authority, but I don't know how to include it in, in any of the goals we have set there, it's just...
You could consider under Elder and Human Services.
Yes, yeah, that's a good place.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see.
It's almost like maybe think about, uh, review adequacy of current stock.
Work with the director.
Yeah, include, uh...
It's something that doesn't come under our jurisdiction, but I think it's something that we have to...
We hear about it a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, and as you said earlier, there's a lot of things that Stat, Shirley and Regulatory or other committees and boards in town. But we still have, you know, a dog in the fight.
And the other one I think that, that people have touched on is the quarry committee. And, and you know, that's, you know, we, we, we developed that plan, what, four years ago, five years ago? And it was with the planning board, and the planning board has done.
They haven't called a meeting.
Called a meeting, yeah, they haven't even called a meeting, so. But it's such an important part of town, and I don't know if we can include that in the, um, what was it, the economic development piece where we were talking? That really doesn't fit, you know, those.
Yeah, I, I see that in, in economic development. I mean, it's supposed to give the recreation, but who knows?
It may fall into the whole.
Might be housing.
Could be a lot of things in the future, but that's why I think this board should annually be on top of what's going on there, not just let it slide like it.
It has in the past, yeah.
When was the last time we went? That has to be two years, three years, so no one.
At least three years ago.
So I don't think anyone from the town's been there in three years, and no one knows what's, we just take it as, hope everything's going good.
And it's such a big piece of property that it borders a lot of houses, and it's not a forever thing. You know, the quarry's going to get used, and what are we going to do with it?
It's going to be a very deep hole.
Yes, it is.
Very, very deep lake.
Yeah, well, that's one of the things, if you do nothing, that's what it ends up being.
Yeah, well, you know.
Could be a reservoir.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, Savas mentioned that at one time, because the aquifer is right under it, he was saying. But we don't know, and, you know, we, we haven't talked about it. I just don't know where, you know, I think whether it's this year or we put it on a list. It's an important piece of property in town that, that town has to have invested interest in.
I think you could, I, I think you could have like a list of concerns that maybe if what we've got here are the goals that, that, I mean, there are a couple of ongoing things, the quarry, uh, the housing authority. It's, it seems like you could have some kind of side list, so you don't forget about them. Because you're talking about them now, they are important, whether they rise to the goal status that we're trying to achieve with having a short list is one thing, but the list of, you know, list of, list of concerns or, or.
Action items that we may take up at a later time or.
Action items is a good way to.
Yeah, action items, list of.
With action items, you assign POCs in suspense, otherwise the action is inaction.
Love that guy.
So we could have that as an addendum.
What other ones like that are there for folks' goals? Uh, I think you, you could put open space in there, or is that part of, that's part of our master?
Yeah, I threw that into the master plan update, the housing update in the open space. Well, in, in, when we're talking about open space specifically in what I wrote, I was looking for something that we could do in the interim of the time between now and there's a master plan to guide us with open space. And that's why I came up with the idea of get everybody to sit down and say, okay, these are priority pieces of property. You know, that we want to keep an eye on. I think, you know, it looks like we're going to lose a longstanding Christmas tree farm to inactivity at least. And things like that, and I think somebody needs to sit down and take a look at the whole picture and say, well, okay, these are things we want to.
If we talk about open space, should we also be talking about how it chooses? Is it going to be passive open space?
Well, that's why I'm saying put everybody together to, so the ag com has input.
Well, I want to make sure active recreation has a.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Has part of it, too. But it has.
I think you could come up with a short list of, if this stuff comes to us, this is, these are the priorities. It would help us a lot when we're having that discussion, somebody says, oh, so much of those properties going up for sale. All right, is that on our list to preserve?
And it, and address that, because one of the goals I had was seek to retain Littleton's become a small-town character. Under there, continue and acquire open space for various approved uses. Conduct a survey of possible acquisitions, that gets to your point. Then coordinate with the conservation commission on type and prioritization of acquisitions in the upcoming fiscal year, so.
We have, but we have a lot, pretty large group of players in open space.
Yeah, it's, there's quite a few.
To be inclusive would be wide by far.
I think Keith might have just put it as an action item, that's probably.
And I, I'd like to throw one up there, too. I know Alex had something about the veterans, but that's another population that's growing in town, are our veterans. With the, with the preference law that was recently passed, is there, you know, our veterans agent? When was the last time he was in to say, hey, guys, you know, board, board of selectmen, I need some help. You know, I'm getting overwhelmed. I know when he needs more money, he comes, but I just think that's a population that, that's definitely growing in town and keep an eye on it. You know, that list of action items.
And I think we have to have another look at the, at the veterans' preference bylaw, because it's, by nature of its own wording, is somewhat restricted into who it applies to, and how we overcome that, to have it be broad-based. So that it truly a veterans' preference, not encumbered by various things that make it not apply.
We have nine, are we going to shoot for 10 here? We don't have to shoot for anything if it's all included.
There's nothing wrong with sleeping on some of this also, that the public hearing wanted to come up, wanted to go away.
Absolutely.
Well, I hope we energize the public to come out and participate with us when we get to a.
We had a big crowd today.
On that.
We probably do, they're just not here.
The better the TV gets, the fewer people come here.
I don't know if it would look like a discussion tonight, that was.
It's pretty dry.
How do you anticipate the public hearing being conducted? Let me ask.
All of streetball.
False statement.
Well, we, yeah, I mean, we, we will post this list on the website, publish it, advertise it. And typically, we, during that public hearing, you, people offer their comments on that draft list, any suggestions. They might actually, we get, you know, correspondence on it beforehand, so.
Yeah, so that, that helps me to, to find the question even further. So we received some correspondence, but that, those people, that person, whatever, doesn't show up. How might we incorporate that, when might we incorporate it into it?
I think we have a discussion like we did tonight for us, and I think that's how we've done it in the past. We get public input from folks in the audience or anybody that writes us, and we have a discussion about it. We say, yes, it works, or no, it doesn't.
Now, some folks who probably attend may not have had the opportunity to see tonight's meeting between now.
LCTV on demand.
I'm just saying, perhaps it's a possibility. Is it worth talking about the process we went through, now it's opening up with the process we went through, how we arrived at each, and, you know, those two, three sentences of rationale behind each of the goals, and then opening it up?
Well, sure, at the public hearing itself, sure, instead, you're right. So that, so that as a framework for the room that night, the board can go through the list, sure, yeah.
We've done that.
Because Vegas freestyle can be entertaining, but not always productive.
And I think if we have input that comes in electronically or in writing, that we actually read that into the record so that the people that are here get to hear what that comment is and not just us.
Sure.
It's all long and good for us to sit there and read it, and then we start talking about it, nobody knows what we're talking about.
But I mean, hopefully when they, it would relate to one of the things we have there, and they could say, we'd plug it in when we get to number four.
It's August 11th, is that right?
It is.
Is it okay to say, you know, suggestions warmly welcomed, we'd ask that you submit your suggestion by August 8th? Pick a date, doesn't matter, but something before the 11th, if it comes on the 11th, it comes on the 11th. But then it's an opportunity to update that electronic record and that those are there for other people to see also.
Yeah, that, that's what the public hearing notice will, will say. It will, and we'll post it tomorrow, we'll have this proposed list and invite comment by, you know, either in writing by noon the previous Friday or in person at the hearing.
And ask for earlier than the Friday, if stuff comes in afterwards, it comes in afterwards, we can deal with that. But sometimes there's a lot of reading, and to give a good thought, Friday noon time, Friday four o'clock in the afternoon for a Monday evening meeting, it's, it's a stressor.
What do you want?
Well, actually, current reg actually talks about Thursday at 4:00 PM.
No, that's when the, that's when the agenda gets posted. If, if the, if you need the agenda packets by Thursday, then you'd need to post the agenda at least a couple of days, at least, at least a day prior.
Are you talking about getting our packets?
Yeah.
Oh.
It'd be helpful to have, you know, at least more than one business day.
Yeah, I got people working right up till noon Friday.
These agendas, I know as.
And if you meet, and when we meet every week, which we do sometimes, then we're barely finishing one meeting before we're working on the stuff for the next meeting.
So I think a lot of the stuff comes in electronically, and that's a simple, you know, we get it all the time, this, today's mail packet.
We could, we could definitely work on speeding up delivery time of the product, because our, you know, the product's done around noon, one o'clock at the latest, and then it's a matter of, right now, copying it then. And that takes an afternoon, that takes Friday, that's how Jen spends Friday afternoon.
Well, I've been there.
So if it, so.
The whole counter is filled with paper.
So, so if we could transition to all electronic, then, you know, then it becomes, you know, you scan it in once, you don't have to collate it, and then you, and then we get it off to you. We could save a couple, a couple of hours that way, but.
Dooson tried that.
For a little while, we could try both, send it electronically and send it like that and see if we can.
I want my mail packet.
That's why you have both, then you can have that. I like being able to find things and control that, like I.
Certainly electronically.
I can't make notes like this, I can do it with a pen.
I'll have my tablet there, I'll get lost.
I won't be able to see it.
Could we try both?
But I would offer the interpretation, at least I have, of this regulation. Members of the board, town administrator, the staff, or others who prepare background material for the meeting should make an effort to have such materials available for 4:00 PM Thursday afternoon. It doesn't mention agenda there, so it's not just the agenda. Now, if it's a regulation that we just can't be met anymore, then that's one opportunity for us to fix.
And maybe one of those regulations we have to look for for the open meeting law.
Yeah.
Because that's what, that's what the, you know, agenda is based on, the posting of the agenda is based on the open meeting law.
I understand that. And the agenda is fairly broad-brushed when you really get down with, and the materials that support it. I would suspect we have at least a good part of those materials before we decide it's going to be an agenda item. Because if we post an agenda and then we don't have the materials available.
So we can get PJ's electronically to them.
I would like that, too, please. Something to think about.
Yeah. Hey, we're an Apple town, let's not upset the apple cart, okay?
He comes in, a couple of meetings, he wants to change everything?
We're just asking, asking for thoughts.
I'm taking examples now.
I'm depending on your experience to help me, guide me.
We all set?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn at 8:58. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.